Ladies and gentlemen, I call this regular meeting of the King William Board of Supervisors to order. And first, we need approval for electronic participation by Mr. Mascowski.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow Mr. Mascowski to participate by electronic.
Second, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Mauren.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mascowski, you're a co-host, so you can speak whenever you want.
Okay, yeah, thanks, everybody. Sorry, I came down with something this morning. I'm not feeling well, so I appreciate y'all letting me remote in.
No problem. All right, folks, next, we're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the pledge allegiance to flag in the United States. All right, has everyone reviewed the meeting agenda and are there any changes or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the amended agenda because it was amended slightly to add Mr. Mascowski's electronic submission.
Sir. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. You know, can you hear announces? Yeah, folks, even on Zoom, we're telling me to make sure we're close to the mics. I think it's probably part of the problem. Can you hear me now? Really?
I can hear you guys just fine. The only time that there seems to be a problem hearing is when there are multiple voices. So I guess if we could just try to go one at a time, but I can hear Mr. Hodges and I can hear Mr. Garber just fine on my end.
All right. Speak up if you can. We'll try to, without a lot of interruption, our next topic is the citizens' comp. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Branch, I jumped right over, dealing with the volume. And did we have emotional? And I said, okay. All right, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Mauren.
Aye.
Mr. Mascowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
And just for the record roll call, Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. River.
Here.
Mr. Mauren.
Here.
Mr. Mascowski.
Here.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye. All right, now, we're up to the citizens' comment period, one opportunity of three minutes per person on non-public hearing matters. If you state your name and where you're from or your address, and we will time it and I'll try to not mess it up like I did in one section here, right? If you touch this phone, it stops.
The guidelines for citizens' comment period in public hearings, it's the policy of the board that its meetings be conducted with the highest degree of order and decorum. The board's integrity and dignity will be established and maintained at all times during the conduct of public business, and the board will permit no behavior, which is not in keeping with this policy. The soliciting of funds from meeting attendees, the use of threatening or profane language, the failure to comply with time limits, violation of board rules, or other forms of disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. The chair will maintain proper order at all times during all meetings of the board and shall effect the removal from any meeting of any person guilty of improper conduct if the offending party fails or refuses to see such conduct. Speakers wishing to address the board shall clearly state their name. All comments are addressed to the chair. Speakers may address only those matters within the scope of the board's authority that are not on the agenda for a public hearing for this meeting. Speakers are allowed one opportunity of three minutes and may not yield any portion of their time to another. Political campaigning, advertising of goods and or services, and the like are prohibited. No speaker is to engage in political statements, personal attacks upon members of the board supervisors, county employees, or officials, or any other person. Use abusive language, discuss matters outside the purview of the board, or publicly discuss matters the board has solely considered in its closed meeting. Clearly state your position. Give the facts to substantiate your position. State the concerns you wish the board of supervisors to consider. If you have a written statement, handout, or other supporting material, hand it to the clerk. Do not hand materials to individual supervisors. If you have specific questions for the board, note that they may not be able to provide an answer immediately during the meeting, and you are always welcome to contact them personally with any questions or concerns.
Now, who would like to come first? Come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Terry Milroy. I'm actually from Powhatan County, but I'm here on behalf of my role as assistant to the FOIA investigator. Time and time again, taxpayers have come to find the current King William Board of Supervisors unresponsive to their needs. When the board took their oath of office, many taxpayers had high hopes for a change in the direction of the county. King William County, like many other localities that are outliers of metro area, has the potential to grow, to attract new businesses and new residents while still maintaining its rural lifestyle. This board has squandered that time, the people's money, and unfortunately harmed the reputation of the county. This board has stifled growth and turned a deaf ear to the concerns of the citizens, taxpayers, and businesses. Everywhere you go, no matter who you talk with, there are complaints about the direction of the county and issues created by the board. With every meeting of the board, King William County falls farther behind. Worse, the county has stagnated due to the ineptitude of decisions and actions taken by the administration. Your staffing hires show your inability to grasp the dire situation, leaving many asking how they could have been considered in the first place. A prime example of your short-sightedness in recognizing the needed transformations to make King William thrive. Taxpayers facing inaccurate assessments were told you would solve this problem, only to find their new assessments incorrect, and countless appeals to correct the issue only found their property cards were not updated. Not only did they face inaccurate real estate assessments, they found that their personal property taxes skyrocketing as well. Your Economic Development Authority website touts and a quote, "New relocating or expanding company, the best of all worlds, unparalleled natural resources, coupled with a reliable labor pool and a business-friendly environment," end quote. This is nothing but hype, and its record of accomplishment is not apparent, also grammatically incorrect. When it was recognized that the board was researching and moving to abolish the constitutional offices of Commissioner of Revenue and Treasury to centralize control of county finances, business and community leaders had had enough. The FOIA research they conducted uncovered the failed strategies and ongoing mismanagement of critical operations that have a negative impact on people and businesses. This is why many of us are here tonight, to tell the people of your backroom deal-making and the hostile actions against the separations of powers that were put in place to keep you, Board of Supervisors, in check, and to tell you that it's, we have had enough and it's time for this group to go.
Good evening, board. My name is Jessica McLean. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I will continue. And inhospitable, I'm, did I say I'm from Alit? That's my district. An inhospitable work environment. Henry Ford once said, "If everyone is moving forward together, then success takes care of itself." When this board of supervisors was elected in 2019, it became incumbent on them to create a plan of action and build a team that could overcome the problems plaguing the citizens. Further, when your election occurred, you became the leadership for the county government operations, which tasks you were, tasked you with hiring the qualified staff required to fill your responsibilities to the citizens who elected you. The research conducted show example after example demonstrating the board of supervisors and its administration participating and more so encouraging finance departmental staff to operate and behave in a completely unprofessional manner, constantly passing blame on to others working in counterproductive manners, all in an effort to beleaguer their perceived opposition. This board knows this, as emails found in FOIA responses evidence the same. Instead of promoting an atmosphere of camaraderie, your handpicked minions built barriers and placed obstacles to keep their incompetence from public scrutiny. As a matter of fact, they continually worked to cover up their failings by laying them off on those offices you seek to abolish. The former treasurer bore the brunt of these failings and recognized quickly what game you were playing. Her level of knowledge intimidated you and the administrative administration staff. The inability to intimidate and control her only strengthened her resolve, but administration would stop at nothing, only increasing the level of conflict. When the interim treasurer assumed the role, she was placed in a terrible position of running the office with no staff and working with a board of supervisors who were hostile to the treasurer's and commissioner of revenue's office. The reckless decision by the King William Board of Supervisors and administration to strip the necessary staff from the treasurer's office resulted in a breach of their fiduciary duty to their constituents, hardly justification for your 10% raise you recently voted and gave yourself. Knowingly understaffing the treasurer's office made it more difficult to operate the office, an office that is elected by and serves the people. How did any of you think that that action was in the best interest of the taxpayer? It wasn't, and you knew it, but it was about creating a narrative that would provide cover for your failures while building support for a hostile takeover of the constitutional offices. Thank you.
Robert Hughes, Second District. This board appears to have a problem working with people. Three county administrators, four treasurers, two CORs in the past four years. Problem with this county really are not that hard to solve. Countless organizations have transformed culture and performance with the right leadership. Many were hopeful a new county administrator with experience could help bring together departments, work collaboratively, better the service to the taxpayer, as seen that clearly has not happened. This board and its administrators have more concern for their greedy desire for control than they do in collaboration with constitutional officers and serving the constituents of the King William County. You have hazardly moved processes to try and gain control. Processes like reconciliation cannot just be moved using a single term and a resolution. And then procedures should be documented with each department's responsibilities and interdependencies clearly defined before approving a change of responsibilities. These are King William's processes, and multiple departments are required to work together to achieve the overall objective. These are standard operating procedures in any affected business with a function that's moved. Given the recent, given the recent changes to your bylaws and actions in the January meeting, this board feels motivated so badly by the need to control, you don't care about hearing the truth, and would rather limit the time of a citizen that to be allowed to address you. Maybe you've forgotten you were elected to serve the citizens, and they are still atop of the organizational chart. You cannot silence the citizens as you so desperately have attempted to do. Why do you have such a need for control? Maybe it's incompetence. It might be insecurity. Are you trying to cover your tracks, or is there something more? Have no doubt we're gonna find out.
My name is Christine Ciccarelli, and I'm in the Fifth District. Troubling issues with the finance department. We are troubled by the lack of qualifications and apparent lack of processes in the finance department. A review of the resources show a lack of previous finance or accounting experience. We have both questions and concerns. We are all of, why are all of the financial statements printed as screenshots in Excel spreadsheets? Excel is a great tool, but it is not an enterprise financial system with controls, checks, and balances. We're not referring to analysis. Excel is fine for that. We are referring to standard reports like year-to-date general fund revenue and expenses. You've seen multiple presentations, and you've, and you've never inquired about this. You even go so far as thanking the finance director for providing such great information. Does it not concern you that the financial information you are seeing is not coming from the financial software as reports? If not, this yet again highlighting your lack of financial understanding and experience. Why are reconciliation reports not available in Edmonds? Because they are done in Excel, and as mentioned, in Excel, you can make any number work by overriding a cell. In 2020, the audit report stated two separate issues. One, quote, "Errors which required adjustments to current financial statements indicated a material weakness in financial reporting. Material adjustments were identified relating to beginning fund balance, accounts receivable, accounts payable, accrued expenses, fund balance, cash, and long-term debt." The recommendation was, quote, "At the court, the county and school board should implement steps and procedures to improve its internal control over financial reporting and to ensure that all year-end adjusting entries are identified and recorded on a timely basis." Two, quote, "A proper segregation of duties has not been established in relation to bank reconciliations and cash receipts." The recommendation was, quote, "Steps should be taken to eliminate the performance of conflicting duties where possible or implement effective compensating controls." Recommended, recommended compensating controls include a documented review and approval process be established outside the treasurer's office. We suggest that the county director of finance review and visibly approve all prepared bank reconciliations, including the self-insurance and cafeteria bank reconciliations, which are currently prepared at the school board office. In the 2021 audit completed late in 2022, both issues were provided a status of, quote, "Condition still exists." Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Carter Garnett. I live in District, District Three. I'm sorry, Carter Garnett. We understand the trouble you were in. You have been accepting of the, of the processes under the treasurer Harry Witt for decades and were complacent with, with, when the new systems were chosen and implemented. It's no surprise, considering none of you have any experience in finance or system implementation, especially not in managing financials or operations for an organization the size of King William County. Thanks to citizens raising questions, you were finally forced to audit the constitutional officers in 2020. The board didn't initiate this. You only did this because citizens found and pressed the issues, and you were forced to do something. Based on that audit, it is well-known that Harry Witt kept paper and pencil-based records. That's just who he was. Why weren't reconciliations an issue back then? By all indications, Mr. Witt would hand off a piece of paper to finance, either you previous, your previous county administrator, or your current financial director, who would work up their numbers in an Excel, Excel spreadsheet, adjust some entries in the system, and viola, got reconciliation. Coincidentally, you decided to implement a new set of symptoms, systems, including the Edmund's financial package. Who did you put in charge of this implementation? The IT director. While this may seem like a logical appointment, anyone with real-world experience will tell you IT is responsible for servers and databases. Someone with functional knowledge on how the system needs to work to serve the end users. We know this because we have spoken with the vendors. Their biggest complaint was the lack of functional engagement and ownership in King William for this highly important conversion. As a result, the, the system implementation was a disaster. Change management was non-existent. Department functional requirements were not fully documented. Users were not ready for the new system with proper documentation and training. Data conversion was incorrect, and as a result, inaccurate data was loaded. Probably the worst decision possible, the legacy system was retired weeks after the new system was turned on against the advice of the new constitutional officers and citizens offering support with a Fortune 500 system experience. All of this happened under your watch, and you were accepting of all of this.
Oh, so we're time's gone already, and we haven't started. Bobby Earhart, Fifth District. So, given that Mr. Mauren and Mascowski ran a private quick group for months after they were elected in 2019, I'm not surprised that the board has succumbed to this. It's ironic, really. One of the messages that the FOIA will receive quotes a supervisor saying, "I don't feel like we have anybody in the office that can perform those duties." The irony is that the citizens feel the same way about the board and the administration and its continued plans to gain control and push power inside the administration. We're not just disgruntled. We've seen the history of this through your tenure. For example, failure to listen to citizens' input. Citizens with qualifications or real-world experience have offered advice, yet you fail to listen, sometimes doing the exact opposite. True leaders surround themselves with successful people. Campaign promises that were just lies. Where is the two-year BPO amnesty proposal? Or any efforts to support small business development and recruiting new businesses to the county? Where are the proposals to promote a more compatible business climate such as curbing regulations that harm businesses as promoted by the Fourth District in 2019? Where is the top-down and bottom-up review of our current tax structure to ensure ways to keep taxes fair and reasonable to meet the citizens' need and expectations as promised by the Fifth District Supervisor in 2019? Instead, we've seen this board kick the can down the road, nod your head, and just say anything, go along with anything the administration makes up. What results has this board to show for three years? We've seen no measurable improvement to operations, revenue, culture, and even supposed work plan. As business and community leaders, we believe the government should operate like a business, where taxpayers are treated like customers and stakeholders and shareholders. A successful business would focus on legitimate revenues, rely on data-driven dashboards, justify investments with business case, and provide clear communications to its stakeholders. They would be accountable and transparent to the shareholders or constituents in this case. It would appear your plan is simply just to unqualify, place an unqualified agent inside the treasurer's office in hope that you can continue to cover up any misdeeds by the administration.
Linda Benson, Second District. On September 14th, 2022, the King William Board of Supervisors, KWBOs, submitted a request to Circuit Court Judge the Honorable Benjamin Elliot Von Deron of the Ninth Judicial Circuit of Virginia. The weaponized content of this letter was a collaborative effort led by the KWBOs members to install their handpicked replacement in the treasurer's office. The Code of Virginia, Sections 24.2 through 228.1F, is clear and states, notwithstanding any provision of a charter to the contrary, "The highest-ranking deputy officer who is qualified to vote for and hold that office shall be vested with the powers and shall perform all of the duties of the office and shall be entitled to all the privileges and protections afforded by law to elected or appointed constitutional officers until the qualified voters fill the vacancy by election and the person so elected has qualified and taken the oath of office." In its own letter to the judge, the KWBOs members acknowledged that their own county attorney advised against filing this letter, as it is contrary to the law. Again, from their letter, quote, "The King William County Attorney Andrew McRoberts has provided clear advice regarding how the Virginia Code provides a vacancy of this nature is typically filled," end quote. The attacks on the constitutional offices by the King William Board of Supervisors are clearly shown by their efforts to circumvent the defined process in the Code of Virginia and requesting a judge to break his constitutional oath and not follow the law against the advice of their county attorney. FOIA requests show thousands of taxpayer dollars have been squandered, all in an effort to settle a political score and put a puppet of the KWBOs in an office to gain control. They covertly engaged the county attorney to research, produce memorandums for abolishment, consolidation, and a charter change as seen documented in detail in the Richmond Law Firm Sands Anderson's invoice. Every one of you took an oath to upcode, to uphold the Constitution and laws of Virginia. The citizens expect you to do just that. The lack of transparency surrounding the KWBOs.
Your time is up.
Mary Sue Bancroft, Alit, Fifth District. A period of process for the interim treasurer. Why has the finance director and staff continued to pummel the treasurer's office with questions and assistance that the finance department should have knowledge and ability to resolve themselves, if not on their own, with the assistance of the Edmunds' support staff? This has been brought to the county administrator's attention numerous times, yet they continue to ask others to do their job. The next round of FOIAs will clearly show this. No doubt, there's been a revolving door in the treasurer's office during your term. What have you done to help these transitions? You formed a finance board in 2020 and even voted to put your internal finance director as the citizen representative. When you found out you couldn't do that, did the judge override you then as well? You appointed another citizen. Three years later, not a single meeting has been held. Please explain why you would create a board and then never call a meeting. How'd you welcome the interim treasurer, a model employee, one who has never been reprimanded by the county, one that has already seen three treasures come and go? And how, how many of you came to offer support to understand the process? Discuss mutual, mutual concerns? Ask how you can help in the transition? Or do any of these things expected from a leader as a professional courtesy? None of you. Instead, before even being appointed, you label her as an outsider, assuming she is the same as her predecessor, discrediting her with lies before she even had a chance, same as you had done with each predecessor. When the judge ruled against your ridiculous request, you did just as you've done before. Irrespective of the outcome or quality of service, you removed resources from the constitutional office. In doing so, you left a single person to handle citizen needs and the responsibilities of the office. If removing staff from the treasurer wasn't meant to cause stress that might lead to a resignation or an error, then what exactly was the intent? This is ill-advised and has been highlighted by auditors in the past as bad practice. In fact, this was highlighted in the 2020 audit report and listed as a condition that still exists in subsequent audits. The fact is, you pay these auditors. They highlight the issues, and you do nothing to correct them. I'd like to offer a quote from Charles Evelyn. He is the new Kent Treasurer and Virginia Treasurer Association Board Member. Mr. Evelyn says, "Treasurer Carlton was placed in a terrible, terrible position of running the office with no staff and working with the board of supervisors who, at the time, were hostile to the treasurer's office." Treasurer Carlton persevered. I've witnessed firsthand as she has overcome obstacle after obstacle. She has been successful at negotiating with the board to reinstate staff positions that were taken away from the former treasurer, all while running the office by herself.
Gentlemen, Chris Gals, District Five. After thorough review, I have some serious concerns. Not every financial report is prepared by the county financial director. These are not reports from the financial software. They are Excel screenshots. Just look forward to tonight's presentation packet to see for yourself. Let's go back to your last quarterly financial report presented on September 12th, 2022. And let's first note that this was two days before that letter to the judge. In that presentation, there are several things that jump out to the experienced eye. As mentioned, the reports are not reports. They're Excel spreadsheets. The basis may have come from the system, but once that data is in Excel, any number can be changed. Rows can be added, rows can be deleted, formulas can be updated. Said differently, the books can be cooked in Excel. Certain cells appear to have been updated or changed. It can be seen by the apparent appearance of the little green triangle in some cells and not in others. This is an Excel feature indicating a potential error in that cell. Any true financial professional should note a check and remove these indicators before presenting this as a formal report. It appeared in every financial presentation we reviewed, including tonight's presentation. But I want us to focus on one row, though. The row that was added to this report, it's called Treasurer Unidentified with a revenue amount of $93,050 for fiscal year 2021. Amount of ninety-three thousand and fifty dollars, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. In the meeting, around the one-hour mark, if anybody's interested, a certain supervisor inquired about the status of reconciliations. The finance director used that opportunity to highlight this row and said the deposits were unable to be identified by the treasurer's office during their reconciliation efforts. She went on to say that both she and the auditors were accepting that this revenue could be booked in two thousand twenty-one. The supervisor went on to question and say, hopefully, these aren't citizen tax payments received, not credited to the citizen, to which the finance director stood in this very spot here, almost suggesting that that certainly could be the case because these, this ninety-three thousand dollars was still outstanding after everything had been, quote, netted down. This is a materially false statement, and the presumption that revenue was collected and not credited to a taxpayer has never been publicly corrected. Even when the auditor came before this board, in this very spot, two weeks later, not a single one of these board members asked the question about that. Why, you might ask? Because the misrepresentation, the financial error that was reported, was made by this county's financial department that you so desperately protect. The facts show that the revenue was in the system at the same time that report was presented. The treasurer's office showed the finance director and the county administrator evidence of this the very next day on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This appears to be double counted revenue and an error in your two thousand twenty-one financial statement. It doesn't look like you're done with two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one just yet, are we? The very next day, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, you send a letter to the judge saying you had no confidence in the treasurer's office and all your confidence and recommendations for control were put into the finance.
Time.
That is the only consistent element of the financial issues over the years.
Good evening. I'm Mike Wade. I'm the gentleman that was tired to instruct this research project that we've been working on and will continue over the next few months. The assessment of this FOIA research has found that the board administration have created a lack of transparency to cover up federal policies and continue to mismanage county operations that ultimately create a detriment to the taxpayers of King William County, the ones you were elected to represent. What we have from FOIAs so far, reconciliations, if they exist, are not completed in admins. They're just spreadsheets, not system reports. Approximately three-point-nine million dollars owed to schools. Over thirty thousand dollars was spent on an outside contractor, researches, schools, reconciliations. That contractor fines approximately three-point-nine million owed to schools, but still King William County doesn't transfer the money to the schools because they can't verify the accuracy of the number. Why? It's highlighted sloppy work in finance, legacy data unavailable to be verified, lack of proper calls, or checks and balances for decades. Emails surrounding the transaction of a fraudulent payment to Sands Anderson by the finance department. Despite public claims that all the money was recovered except for the insurance deductible, it's been shown through FOIA that no insurance claim was ever even filed by King William County. What wasn't requested by FOIA? Sand Anderson's memo for the abolishment of the constitutional offer was not provided invoking client privilege. As Maxer County Attorney said, invoking privilege can be used at your discretion. You withheld three documents and heavily redacted the only communication you provided. We know what you asked him to do, the document, uh, option to abolish the constitutional offers. It was in the invoice and the basis for the request. List who has the keys to the treasurer office. Why does the treasurer come in on Monday to find the door unlocked? Do you know, you don't know who has access? We request a lock change immediately. Changes to treasurer website regarding delinquent taxes. Who requested and authorized change in treasurer's section of the site? E D A expenditures do not include grant payments, some of which are known to have been paid to E D A members. Special meeting on two ten twenty-three where some, but not all, the board members met in secret or no notice or meeting minutes of this closed door covert meeting were provided. What's next with FOIA? We're only just beginning our research and have more requests coming on a variety of new topics we've been entitled to. Consider this your notice.
I'm David Robinson from Fourth District. Have no desire to be here before this board with reselling cases and trying to develop businesses and tax revenue in this county for years. Each time, it's been well-known to be the most difficult county within the region to work with. Attorneys in Richmond, when you tell them to represent you here, automatically put a thirty percent surcharge to have to face the disorganization of this county. The generations that once sat in positions that you occupy right now have passed. Some intellect. Most universally, they carry the history of impeccable character and honor. Always serving the best interest of the people. The information that has surfaced just recently, and I find appalling, makes many believe, myself included, that the three controlling members of this board are nothing more than a mere shadow of what was once greatness in this county that we care so much about. We have widely been known to be anti-business. You've demonstrated that over and over and over again. Anything you say contrary is a blatant lie. Now it appears that you are no longer honoring our constitution, but are attempting to eliminate or circumvent our constitutional offices using our taxpayer dollars to pay the attorneys to do your work. This behavior must stop now.
Todd Hoare, First District, Dogwood Drive, West Point. Much has been in the news about tyrannical rulers around the world and the actions by the dictators of Russia, Russia and China that have the entire world on edge. However, we must not overlook the fact that those tyrants are no more dangerous than local elected officials who claim to uphold democracy yet do everything in their power to reduce personal freedoms and destroy our constitutional form of government. Each of you took an oath of office as follows. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as Board of Supervisor according to the best of my abilities. So help me God. The Constitution of Virginia, Article Seven, Section Four, clearly states, "There shall be no, there shall be elected by the qualified voters of each county a city treasurer, a sheriff, an attorney for the Commonwealth, a clerk, who shall be clerk of the court in the office of which deeds are recorded, and a commissioner of revenue." Yet recently released FOIA requests reveal beyond any doubt that our elected officials have been actively working to abolish and/or circumvent what our constitution directs. There is something sinister about someone who says one thing but does another, especially when the elected leaders professing to protect freedom and democracy are in effect, in effect, being deceptive. When a man takes an oath of office, it is a sworn testimony. When he deliberately and intentionally chooses to break that oath, he is lying to God. When he lies to God, how can the common man expect to ever be treated any differently? Such people suffer, suffer from a level of moral perpetuity that rivals even the most notorious tyrants in history. It will not be tolerated in King William County. The people will rise up and reclaim their rights and freedoms. Any elected officials who choose to violate the principles of our constitution will be held accountable. We are aware the actions discussed tonight are the primary reflection of a majority of the board members and will accept their resignation anytime. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Civil Rose. Yeah, thank you. I live at thirty-six fifty-six Custis Mill Pond Road. Own a large farm that has three houses. And I live in two of them, one on Custis Mill Pond, the other one, Wakema Road. I believe I was here exactly a year ago concerning the change to the dog kennel ordinance. A year later, the kennels beside me are still in violation of the ordinance. Uh, this has been going on now for sixteen months. Um, I've been complaining, I don't know whether it's eight years or ten years now about the dogs. The kennels were built fifty feet from the property line, as far away from my neighbor's house as he could possibly put them without blocking my right of way. They are also in front of my house at the time, and the setback at the time was two hundred feet. When the county would come out for inspections, the dogs would get moved because the ordinance only covers five or more dogs, and then the dogs would be moved back. In addition, there's still an exemption on five-acre parcels for noise from dog barking, so I have no avenue to do anything about the noise. Finally, last year in October, two thousand twenty-one, King Williams started taking action. The ordinance changed the hundred feet closer to my home, so my neighbor was allowed to put them a hundred feet further away from his house. In addition, the new ordinance requires a visual block approved by the zoning department. At this time, there is nothing between my sideline and the dog kennels that are in front of my house. Every time I go to my front door, sit on my porch, which is how I enter my home, obviously, the dogs go off. The trees that they claim are planted are some shrubs that are approximately twenty-four inches tall, and they were planted in my right of way, which blocks my entrance for ingress and egress. I've made repeated requests to have the shrubs removed, which I can do myself, but I didn't put them there. Um, I bring this up now because I don't have a whole lot of avenues of choice. I either have to put up with the dogs or move. So that's what I've decided to do. Um, there is an avenue for civil suit because I can't sleep at night. So moving to Wakema Road was my next option. Now the county is considering to take my next-door neighbor, Wakema, and approve a short-term vacation rental. And I'm thinking, is there any peace anywhere? Oh, again, the existing ordinance for short-term rentals I find is ineffective and will put the enforcement on the neighbors, which has already caused problems for me on Wakema Road. All I want is a peaceable existence, and please consider the impact. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gene Campbell, and I reside here in the Second District at four-four-six White Oakland Lane. I stand before you tonight to express my support and appreciation for your service on this board. It is a thankless job. Not for one minute do I believe any of you or the county administration conspired to deceive the citizens you represented. I am a lifelong resident of this county. I have known all of you for many years, some of you all my life. And I know each of you to have the best interests of everyone in this county at heart. They are those who would like nothing better than to see you fail. They are not interested in seeking solutions to problems, but only interested in creating controversy and dividing us. They thrive on it. That is what is wrong with America today. If they really cared, they would sit down with each of you and find ways to resolve matters. Compromise and working together matters. Again, I wholeheartedly support you and thank you for your service.
Anyone else? Anybody? And with that, I will close the public commentary. Next, we have on the consent agenda.
So Chair motion to approve the consent agenda. Sorry.
Ms. Branch?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Chairman Hodges?
Aye. The next item we have is public hearing. And you, you can come forward and we're gonna have presentations on these first. Sure. Which one are you doing first?
See which one we have. So the first one was under the floods. And this had come before you a while back. It went for public hearing through the planning commission, um, and they recommended that the amendments be approved. So now we're back before you, um, for the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions coming right now? You don't want to wait in the public hearing, no?
And there should be ordinance twelve dash twenty-two in your packet.
Right. On that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance twelve days twenty-two, if anybody would like to come forward. Now, when coming forward, uh, close that public hearing. Do I have any discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approval, and it's twelve dash twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Brand?
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Chairman Hodges?
Aye.
So next, we have a request for a rezoning case, um, and then a C U P, both on the same parcel. Um, this is part of twenty-one dash fifty, which is located at the left corner of thirty um, in Sheldon Place. And this had previously been zoned for, um, industrial, and then the front corner had been, um, zoned to be one. They are requesting that sixteen-point-three acres be rezoned to R one so that they would be permitted to construct sixty-four age-restricted townhomes. Uh, three acres on the corner would remain be one for a possible library site. This did go through public hearing process with the planning commission, and they voted to recommend approval to the board. And I do have a, um, brief, um, PowerPoint on that. And this is the section, it's the bottom section. It's showing all as one parcel, but it would be the bottom half. And the park is located, um, across the street, just to kind of give you an idea of where it's located. All right. Um, these are some elevation views of what they're proposing, um, to build out there. Um, and this is the concept plan of what is being proposed. The entrances would be off of Sheldon Place and not on thirty. Um, and the corner was left out for business. That gives you some of the rear elevation and floor plan. And floor plan. Um, that is, uh, looking in on Sheldon Place.
Is there a bond on this to guarantee completion?
They actually, well, they have proppers that they have, um, submitted to go along with the, um, approval. And.
Do we have those now packaged? I didn't see them.
They should be in the packet.
Maybe. Okay, they're not in there. Should we, should we see those before we vote on anything?
Um, what else?
They're, they're in my packet, guys. If, if you look at the memo and you go to, uh, the request for the conditional use permit, there's bullet pointed items. The numbered items there are the, uh, proper conditions.
There are four proppers. I can read them real quick if you would like. Um, the conceptual plan, the property show, you've got them, okay.
They're actually on the front end of the, this right here.
Okay, I'll say it. All right, thanks.
Yes, you don't want to be occupied by fifty-five and older.
There was, um, one correction, um, that was brought to my attention this afternoon. Um, on the conceptual, uh, ownership was wrong, it was, um, and they fixed it. It was under Belucci. Um, and it was put into McCauley Place LLC, and that was on their concept plan, but they sent us a revise with the right name on it.
Anything further, if not, I will open a public hearing on ordinance one dash twenty-three. Rezoning on, in McCauley Park.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Todd Rogers. I'm with RCI, and we are the applicant in this particular request. Um, if you would mind, could you go back to the site plan? I'd just like to point out just a couple of things, um, on this request that, um, is, um, there. Um, Mr. Graham obviously did a good job of putting together the facts of the case. Um, so, um, just existing on Route thirty there, this is a entrance into an existing neighborhood called McCauley Park. Um, with that entrance, uh, we had already built turn lanes that come into there, and we wanted to make sure that those turn lanes were still adequate for this development that we're proposing now. So we did engage a traffic study that was done, um, which confirmed that the, uh, turn lanes that we've already built there and the stacking that goes in there is adequate. They were originally built for this area to be industrial and commercial in there. Um, and, um, in working with the planning office and the administration to come up with something that we think would be more compatible with the neighboring, uh, subdivision, the neighbors there, offering this, um, age-restricted fifty-five and older, uh, community we felt was good there. And also, um, allowing for a three-acre site on the, uh, corner there to be a future library site for the county um, is what we're proposing here. But I'm here to answer any other questions there may be, but I just wanted to make sure you knew about the, uh, traffic study that was performed on the property. We still, are we still?
Yeah.
Rogers, this, this isn't, I, I'm assuming that you did not consider the new across-the-road development that's, that's gonna be happening here in your VDOT study?
Um, well, that'd be, that particular, um, proposal that's across the road doesn't, uh, use this and will be using this intersection, well, not exactly. Um, there's the proposed development that was approved, um, approximately a month ago. Doesn't have an access on thirty at the same location as this access, so that wouldn't have been the same intersection, if that answers your question on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we need to finish with the hearing before we start asking questions.
Okay. Anyone else would like to come forward? Question, Daniel.
Good evening. Bob Earhart, fifth district. This is more of a rhetorical question than anything else. If memory serves me, wasn't there a, a propper previously done or made for Kensington for a library also? And what if any reconciliation between the two proppers has occurred? Is that still proper? Is that still out, or does that no longer exist? Does that need to be resolved before this one goes forward?
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance zero-one dash twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we pass ordinance zero-one dash twenty-three.
Sorry, sorry. Um, had the sign propper's been submitted by the property owner? Okay. My, my advice is to have the propper sign before the legislative action is taken.
Uh, resent my motion and wish to table.
Make another motion to table.
Oh, I'd like to ask Mr. Rogers one question if I could prior.
Why not?
Mr. Rogers, it's my understanding the the streets and roads are gonna be public.
The streets and roads within, um, McCauley Park are public. The streets and roads within the townhouse community are not. They are private, and they will be managed and taken care of by the homeowners.
So they'll be private, so is it, will you incorporate anything into your homeowners association with fees to maintain those roads?
Yes, sir. And that's, um, and if you, again, if you pull up the site plan, the reason they can't be public is because when you ever have parking that are perpendicular to the road, to the road, the, that's not a VDOT standard that they would abide by.
Are the bylaws of the homeowners association that, uh, general rated yet?
No, sir. That happens during the plating process. After we get the sub, the final engineering done and we get the plating done, then with the, that plating, the bylaws and the homeowners association documents are recorded at that time.
No, okay. And I actually have a question for Sherry before we table this. Didn't we have another fifty-five and older that had to be changed because they could not sell?
Yeah, uh, across where we did the hundred and twenty townhomes, um, in the beginning when they were doing the development. Part of that was age-restricted, um, and that got changed. I don't remember what year, but
I remember.
It's been some time ago. I, I wanna say maybe in oh-eight. So. But they took the age restriction out.
That's, that's the option of the board. It would come before the board, and they would make a decision at that time. This is probably, I, I assume this is gonna be dated. It will be dated as, uh, fifty-five plus.
It will, and the proppers will also have to be recorded.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table.
Already there.
Okay, second.
Yeah.
I would just, uh, recommend that it be a, a motion to postpone if there's a if it's gonna go to the next, next meeting, or if they are able to get the proper sign, you can table it for.
I don't know. Next meeting, but well, that's a budget session, but that'd be all right. Can you get it done that fast?
Um, I mean, I, I know he's willing to sign it tonight.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If there's a notary and he wants to sign it tonight, you could table it for, you know, you could move it down the agenda.
Um, if you maybe want to table it until after your work session, and we can get signatures and, uh, Chris can authorize it.
So, so that would be a motion to postpone. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to postpone.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Chair, unless, unless there's other objections to the, or other, uh, concerns regarding the development, I would move the table to, to the bottom of the agenda.
Later on tonight.
Let the planning, uh, uh, director work with the, uh, developers. The prop, the properties would be properly signed, then you can make.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table to later.
The third tabling, okay. We're just putting it off to the end of the agenda. All right, and next item, I was rose.
Has it been seconded? I made the motion.
It doesn't have to be seconded to table.
Okay.
Because we're just putting it off.
Okay.
We, we do have to have a motion and a vote to table. Remember, we changed those bylaws ten years ago.
Well, the motion, the motion to, uh,
Didn't we?
We, we, we made the motion. We don't have a second.
I'll, I'll second the motion that was made.
Thanks.
I, Ms. Brand.
Mr. Greenwood.
And I don't know what's going on, because we were told that we don't have to have a second for table, because we just did this in planning commission, but.
The planning commission might have a one-member tabling, but we did away with one-member tabling a long time ago.
Before my, I was gonna say, I don't remember that either, but okay. Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
All right, and now we're at resolution twenty-three dash eighteen, McCauley Park, Sherry. Hope she's gone out.
I don't see what they did to the signature.
Yeah.
I believe that also will need to be moved to the end because it can't be approved until the zoning is approved.
I would, uh, do the public hearing now.
I'll open the public hearing for resolution twenty-three days eighteen. Anyone like to come forward? Do you know when I'll close that public hearing? Would anything else to just put it worth to the end, correct? All right, our next thing is presentation, all points broadband update, Steve.
Well, there would still be a, uh, motion. Right.
Mr. Chair, a motion to table, yeah. Until, until the later in the meeting, uh, resolution twenty-three eighteen.
You get a second, I'll say. Okay. All right, now, Ms. Brand.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Sorry, hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. Now with the all points update.
Good evening, Chair, the, uh, gentlemen of the board. I'd like to turn the mic over to Mr. Tom Ennis, who has a presentation for the update from all points.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update. Excuse me. Um, as a, a reminder, All Points Broadband and the county partnered for a competitive grant application. Uh, we were awarded, uh, five point four million dollars from the state. And that contract started, uh, late last year. It is to bring private-to-the-home broadband service to twenty-two-hundred-and-thirty-six unserved locations in the county. Uh, we're also going to build about two-hundred-and-fifty miles of broadband fiber in the areas where it does not exist. You see on this map here, we have, uh, green locations where the, the households are, uh, red lines is where most of the fiber will be built. There's some sections of the county that are unserved, uh, not included in our project. There's another broadband provider called Breeze Line that has uh, won a federal grant to build broadband to unserved areas, but all of these green dots will be served by All Points Broadband. And we're working on this with our utility, uh, partners, REC and Dominion Energy, uh, that each take about fifty percent of our network. We've hired, uh, a local engineering firm called Timmons Group to be our primary, uh, skilled labor vendor. We also have a couple of other nationally recognized firms helping us keep the, uh, project on track. Uh, what we're focused on now are, uh, getting our key dependencies in place before we build the last mile broadband. Uh, first, this is middle mile capacity place. This means that, um, you know, our fiber connecting to someone's home has to connect to a middle mile provider. And the reason why folks don't have broadband today is that there's not middle mile fiber out there, uh, much less last mile, so we need to get that in place first. Uh, second is the utility make-ready process. Uh, we have about forty-two-hundred poles, uh, electric utility poles across the county that we're going to be attaching our fiber to. And it is an order of magnitude greater number of pole attachment requests than either of, uh, REC and Dominion have received in the county. Uh, we do about an annual amount, uh, every month and a half. Uh, it's a lot of poles that were, that were improving. Uh, it's a long and drawn-out process, and we're, we're working diligently on that. Third is that we want a significant queue of constructible and permitted fiber miles before we release it to a contractor. So this means, uh, we need a lot of our design done, a lot of the permits approved for pole attachments, and all the poles need to be ready for our contractors to attach the fiber. Right now, our low-level design is underway, uh, the related milestone for this and the grant program we expect to be done in April. Uh, the permitting process with railroads, uh, in, uh, King William, that's primarily Norfolk Southern, in just one section of the county, uh, and permits have been out or underway. We're also working on a site acquisition process for our cabinets, so the little pedestals you see by the side of the road that power and regenerate the fiber. And that's an ongoing process right now. We will have that wrapped up probably in the middle of the summer. All of our materials, uh, are at inventory levels that we need so far to be consistent with our plan. And I know there's been a lot of supply chain issues over the last year or so. Uh, we're ahead of that. We have all the materials that we need for our, uh, network to be constructed on time. There's two, uh, reservations where we're providing full service, uh, P'Monki and Matt and I, working with tribal leaders there and the federal agencies to make sure we meet all of our archaeological and environmental, uh, concerns. Actually, our team was at the P'Monki reservation on Friday, completing all of the pre-site services there. Both of those, uh, reservations are in the Dominion service territory, so we're coordinating with Dominion on communications there. Uh, there is a possibility of unserved locations that we may have missed in our grant application or that had at one time been served by a, another ISP. And there's a, a number of federal grant programs out there. An internet service provider called Story has defaulted on some of theirs in the county. Uh, we're taking on a lot of those extra locations. Uh, we're building them at the same time that we do our VADY grant. Uh, so if any of your constituents come to you with issues about broadband, uh, please connect up, connect in with us, and we'll, we'll get them included in our plan. Just as a, a reminder, uh, our progress is reported, and we earn remittances in arrears. Uh, a lot of grant programs, you know, the money goes out at the beginning, and there's nothing to show for it. At least the way we set up our grant is that no funding goes to All Points until we can demonstrate a milestone, uh, to you all and to the state. And, um, it, a lot of programs are based on just reimbursements of expenses, and we didn't want to do that with the county. There's a lot more accountability here. So like I said, in August of twenty twenty-two, the state awarded a five-point-four-million-dollar, uh, competitive grant to, uh, All Points and the county. A number of the applicants in this grant program weren't successful, but your application was, was competitive. And again, no local or state funds go to All Points until we can demonstrate our milestones have been achieved. In the fourth quarter, Dominion Energy, uh, re- received their filing approval from the State Corporation Commission. We started our low-level design in the first quarter, just, I think, a week or two ago, we started our utility pole attachment process. And as you may have noticed, there's a lot of REC, uh, construction underway in the county. That's progressing well. Um, they're, they're a great partner to have. In the second quarter, you're gonna see the same kind of construction happening on the Dominion Energy middle mile. Uh, we're also going to do a groundbreaking event, uh, with the county and the state, uh, probably in April. And also in April, we're gonna submit, um, the documentation for LLD Nelson being completed. Uh, later on in the year, in the third quarter, you're gonna see a lot more of the pole make-ready construction underway, uh, across the county. This is before, again, before All Points attaches our fiber. And then later in the year, in the fourth quarter, will be the last mile fiber construction from All Points Broadband. At the beginning of next year, we'll be substantially complete with our entire network. And customer installations are gonna be ongoing, and this is when we file a, a closeout report to the state and the county. Uh, we'll do a couple of those reports and in addition to every single monthly report that we're doing now. And then in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, uh, we'll file, file our final report to the state, and there's gonna be a sunset on these, these grant-enabled benefits. So if a, um, customer signs up today or today or in the fourth, first, first quarter of twenty twenty-four, uh, we waive a whole lot of our installation fees. So standard installation uh, no matter the distance, we cover the cost for standard fee. And I know right now, if, if someone signed up for cable internet, they're we have out in the middle of nowhere, they're going to get a quote for ten, fifteen thousand dollars, you know, uh, that's why this grant program was set up. Not going to be this kinds of piece here. It's all under ninety-nine dollars and and we, when we do permissions, it'll be less than that. Uh, I want to remind folks that there is a thirty dollar per month discount for all eligible households. This is through a federal program called the Affordable Connectivity Program. Uh, I put the website here. Uh, you want to get this out in your newsletters. There's not a lot of uptake in this, uh, but plenty of folks are qualified. And they don't have to do anything except demonstrate eligibility. Uh, most of it is income based, but if you have a kid in a school that participates in free reduced lunch, your household qualifies. All kinds of federal programs. Just have to say you participate in that and you get this thirty dollar with discount. Uh, that applies to all points broadband. And I, I Breeze Line participates in it, all the other ISPs participate in this. The website where we are uh taking customer inquiries is A P B Fiber dot com. You go there, you pre-register, there's no commitment. Uh, you sign up for notifications and confirm that you're in the project. Um, uh, I want to be clear, you don't have to sign up to be in the project. If you're one of those twenty-two hundred and thirty-six homes you're in. Uh, we'll tell you about ninety days in advance before services available in your neighborhood. Uh, I mean, you can sign back up. If you did sign up, you'll get an email notification. Otherwise, you're going to get more mailers and see more yard signs than you've probably ever wanted. Uh, so we're going to get the word out. I would say right now, King William is uh at a high percent, twenty-eight percent. The folks have already pre-registered. I checked before coming out here, six hundred and thirty-nine folks have already signed up. So what happens uh closer to signup is we split the project into fiber service areas and we sequence those based on optimal construction. Not on a specific part of the county, so that the F S A's that have the most constructible and permitted miles will go first. Um, and then in the, the adjacent F S A's that are on, under fiber construction, that's the pole make ready is going on um, until their F S A can be ready. A quick preview of what the website looks like. Yeah, obviously it's mobile friendly because we're uh dealing with folks who don't have broadband today, but you can go here, you put in your, your address. Um, it's A P B Fiber dot com, you pre-register, you check your, your location. If you're not included in the project, we'll ask you a series of questions to determine what your broadband is today and we'll find a way to get you broadband. Uh, right now, the, the message will be that we're on the way. It's unavailable today, but you sign up and you'll get a notice within ninety days. Uh, if you're outside of the project, we'll ask you a bunch of survey questions. Uh, uh, I just want to remind everyone that we used to have a website called Fiber dot all points broadband dot com. It was too long to fit on the yard sign, so we changed it to A P B Fiber dot com, but you don't have to redo anything. Same website. And, and with that, I welcome any questions.
Mr. Chair, uh, you mentioned the milestone uh payment and stages.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how many stages is it?
There's three milestones. Uh, one is a mile release from low level design. Uh, the second is a all points broadband fiber mile constructed. Uh, and then the third is when we we pass a home with service. It's called a serviceable unit passing. So those are the, the three milestone categories. Uh, we have estimates of when that'll take place. Uh, but we present data to the county and to the state uh evidencing that before we get any permits.
And those milestone payments, what percent, uh, percentage of payment on each one of those stages, do you know?
I, I can get back to you on each one. I know overall, I think the state grant was about thirty percent of the project. We're paying for about forty percent of it, so I'd say it's about thirty-five cents per house.
That's good enough. I just wanted to make sure that if something happened, we wouldn't be, you, you don't get all the money upfront. So I'm happy, I'm happy to hear that.
Right.
Thanks.
Since this has started, we've gotten several conflicting reports. Last time, it wasn't you that was here, but somebody told us that not everybody's getting served now. And then we're told, well, if you're underground now, we're not going to service you for the hundred ninety-nine dollars. You're going to have to pay for the underground. So which is right?
So, in general, if the, the broadband service is going to follow the path of your electrical service, so let's say your electrical goes on the poles until about a hundred feet from the home and then it goes underground. We're going to follow that path and that's a standard install. That's included.
That's what we thought. It's right. That's still correct.
That, that is still correct. Now, we say uh, Mr. Greenwood, the service to your home is going to be aerial. And you say, well, I want it underground and I want you to go to the back of the house, then that's no longer standard.
Right, we understand. But I, what we, what the point we brought up was a lot of these subdivision, new subdivisions are all underground. It comes overhead to about a mile from the subdivision, then it goes underground. They said, well, we're not doing those subdivisions because we're not putting it underground. So as long as we're not asking for underground when it's above ground poles, it should be covered with the hundred ninety-nine.
Standard install.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody heard it, so.
And we do, we do a, a survey before every install and we communicate that to the member.
Okay, and will, will we get a list of actual addresses? Because like I said, I've seen some stuff on there. My name's on that list, but I'm one of the ones that's not eligible because supposedly I'm now on Breeze Line because I'm in that gray area. I'm on Rappahannock Power, not served by Breeze Line, but it's la la land, so.
So have you gone to the, did you say you, you had signed up?
I'm on your site and you said I can get service, but I can't because I asked Mr. Moran and he says, well, no, you're not. You're in this other plan. Because maybe Breeze Line will come and expand theirs, but maybe not, so.
Oh, there, there are some cases where because the census block is split on a road, one side is Breeze Line, one side would be all points. I'd be happy to look into yours.
Okay, all right, thank you. It's not just me, it's some other people, to be honest, too. I think Ms. Mason over there, hers is on Roanoke, which is right around the state tower.
Yes.
Okay, so we can give you.
There's a, um, you know, a, a number of the data points rely on careful mapping and that causes, as you can imagine, plenty of downstream.
Okay, thank you.
Should a resident elect not to receive it, neighbors get it, love it, will they have a second chance?
Oh, of course, they can, they will be able to sign up, you know, as long as they want.
Until the period.
There's no deadline. There's only a, a one-year period where we extend that um the one ninety-nine fee for the lawn crops. So if they miss that window, you know, and they live, you know, a mile off the road, it's going to be expensive job. So I would encourage people to sign up soon as they can.
Um, I'm personally disappointed that you only have six hundred and thirty-nine signups, but we'll, we will work to get the word out to everybody as fast as we can.
I would say average is about fifteen to twenty percent at this point, so yeah, twenty-eight percent go above that.
Mr. Chair. Oh, if, if, if I might just real quick, so um, the timeline um has bounced around a little bit. Uh, last time we had you guys actually in front of us, I think we were, we were looking at uh, August was the, the timeline that we were given for substantial completion. This is, this is closer to what the original timeline was and what I kind of expected, but where, where are we with our level of confidence in the substantial completion timeline right now?
Uh, we were optimistic to beat the original timeline in August, uh, but we're going back to the original one of, of eighteen months, so um, eighteen months from August of twenty twenty-two. And I, I don't know how to say the confidence, but I'm very confident on that. Um, I'm also confident that it won't be built in, in August of twenty twenty-three.
That's another thing we had heard. We heard that you aren't going to turn anybody on, no matter whether some people were completely hooked up, some people weren't completely hooked up until everybody's hooked up.
We won't, we, we will turn on a fiber service area, which will be several hundred homes at one time. So some folks at the beginning of that are going to see a whole lot of construction and a lot of fiber in front of the house and they can't sign up until the whole fiber service area is built.
Okay.
Uh, but we're not waiting for the entire county to be.
Okay, that's what I saw. I don't have any question. I'm going to talk.
Um, I, I would like to continue getting regular updates on this, um, you know, as often as possible because we're kind of, you know, we're, we're in the home stretch here. We should start seeing some construction happening soon. And so I would just like, um, you know, for, for us to know where you guys are for the public to have a clear picture of where you guys are as well, as you can see tonight, um, when there's, when there's radio silence rumors start flying. So the more, uh, uh, you know, the more transparency we can have, the more opportunities to communicate with you guys in a public setting, the better.
Uh, yes, sir. Happy to come down here.
Mr. Hudgens, our portion of the five point four million is, was how much? Two point?
Two point five. Two point five.
Two point five, of which it was ARPA.
Two, two million, I believe, is what we.
I was just wondering, this may not be your question, but you don't correspond with that other company, do you? You're just yours.
Uh, wish.
Like Breeze Line or something like that. I doubt it, but I, that may be a question for Mr. Ashcraft. I was wondering if we could maybe get them to come too, I mean.
I, I know that they're waiting for the latest round of Vatty awards. It was December twenty-one when we won ours. Uh, I understand it's still I, I believe they said it's on the governor's desk or close by.
They, yes. I think we're, we're waiting for those uh award announcements. And then the same thing that we went through, there's, you know, six, eight months of coming up with the actual contract, but uh, I believe all of this, the F Y twenty-three baby grant applications have been scored, uh, and they're waiting on a decision packet.
So what that means, Mr. Greenwood, is that if Breeze Line wins a Vatty contract, it combines with the, the FCC's R D O which in that, in that blank area, south of three sixty. Uh, that's what we're talking about. So if we can get things moving at the state level, it may impact the federal program and get things faster. We just don't know.
We hope.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Like you said, keep us updated.
Yes, sir.
Max, I think you're up next with the staggered election terms and uh, Ms. Fox.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The last time I was with you, I gave you a packet or just some general information for state code on your options. If you choose to go the route of staggered terms and what those options look like. Um, so I think what the process was, we tabled it until tonight for you all to discuss and determine which option you'd like to take. And then in that, in that case, then you'll move forward to drafting an ordinance for the.
But it, the precincts can't be decided until the elections go through, right, the way I read.
Right, you have three options.
Yeah.
So your three options were, um, two newly elected members will volunteer to be the two districts that have a two-year term after they've been elected. Um, after certi- option two, after certifying the election, the electoral board will assign the terms of the member, members individually. So after it's been certified, then it can happen after that. The third option is the electoral board may assign the terms by district in a drawing held prior to the last day for candidates to qualify. This option is done if it's directed by an ordinance or resolution that is adopted thirty days prior to the last date of file. So again, the last date of file is June the twentieth of twenty twenty-three. So thirty days prior to that is a Sunday, I think. So you would look at that Friday or that Monday. To get that taken care of, probably Monday, uh, Friday, the nineteenth of May is when this would need to be taken care of and, and done. So that that way, thirty days before, any candidates that are wa- wishing to seek office are aware that this has been made a change to the office that they're potentially seeking for a two-year term as opposed to a four-year term for this one round. And then it'll go onto a staggered version of every two years.
Start January first.
Be two and three.
And also school board too.
Yeah, so whatever is decided by this board and this governing body also reflects on the school board of the county.
And the first district would affect the uh.
The, if, if written into the ordinance, you would, uh, the first district would affect the at-large member on the school board at this time.
That's what I thought. And then all the others numbered would affect.
Mr., Mr. Chair, if, if we decide to do this, I would be favorite, in favor of option three. That way, those that are running would, would physically know whether they would uh have prior to the election, whether they would have a short term. Is that my understanding of option three?
Yes, we make that determination before the filing deadline.
Right.
So that candidate, that potential candidates that are wishing to seek office for this or even school board would know that that is determined, that that particular district would have a two-year term for this election.
But nobody, none of us could volunteer at that point.
No, nobody can volunteer until after they have been uh elected.
But I mean, you can't do it at all in this office.
Yep.
Ms. Fox, does the school board districts have to follow the board districts?
Yes.
Yes.
Really?
That's why the one is at large. Because the, y'all won't have a one up here.
But if four and five elect to do the two-year, school board, four and five have to follow. Okay.
Well, it hadn't been any secret. I've been in favor of this for over a year since I lo- watched the election results in the last election. I noticed so many uh counties were doing this. And it's my understanding now that of the ninety-five counties in the state of Virginia, sixty of them do these split, split terms. And it, you know, it's obvious the reason they do it is something nuclear happens. That you could lose that whole board, you would have a brand new board with, with no experience. You know, that's just the way I feel about it. Uh, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us do at minimum one of those three options.
So you're not making a motion on that third?
Yeah, well, I would, I will, if you wish, I will make, Mr. Chair will make a motion on option to approve option three, staggered elections.
That's a more discussion, that's all right, yeah. Um, and like I said, this is just school board and board of supervisors. Uh, every other constitutional office in the county.
Maintain their terms.
So just these two oddball people be, have, have a whole special election on.
No special election.
No special election, but.
In two years' time on the November general.
So people will have to come out again and vote for some supervisors on an odd year with, with not the other constitution.
And school board, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And I've been told that some. Be non, I call it the national election.
So if, if determined, then in two years' time, it'll be November general of twenty twenty-five.
It'll be after the main presidential election.
Yes.
But like I said, it's still an off year.
Because you will make this determination before it is elected in twenty twenty-three.
And I know you said nowadays, it's like, I know in the past, it's off years have not had much participation, but you, I thought what you told.
Uh, we've been seeing quite a bit of an uptick.
That's what I thought you said. It's pretty even now, so we wouldn't.
Yeah.
I'm just afraid that some of the people that lose the straw and always lose the straw, well, maybe people won't come out and lose that second year. But I guess it depends on how many people show up and whoever shows up is who determines who's going to win.
Steven, you only need them in draw.
That's true. If it's five people, it's five hundred, right? Well, that's true. Okay.
I don't think you're going to see that.
I like the idea too, but I just don't like some of the county getting switched and everybody else on the other, but that's the way it is.
And, and it's just for this, this one piece. I mean, it's only for the one time. And after that, you will, the whoever's elected after that two-year term is up, you will maintain your four-year term.
Right.
But I'd suggest we let this. Let's think about this and then maybe vote on the next opportunity. It's no major hurry for this.
They have to do it by May.
You have to do it by May nineteenth, you choose. Because you have to hold a public hearing on the ordinance that you're adopting.
Probably have to do it by April, where that, that's coming up, because we have to have thirty days notice.
At any rate, I would like to make a motion, you know, we can.
Right.
I'd like to make, uh, like to make a motion to approve option three for staggered terms and we'll see how it shakes out.
And a- at this point, um, the board is directing staff, you know, to the extent that you all want me to participate in that as well to prepare the ordinance for you all to consider at a future meeting. No actual change will happen tonight. This would go before public hearing and all that.
Right.
Correct.
So I, I've said before why I have reservations about this and I maintain those reservations. I will vote uh, a affirmative on this motion, just so that we have an opportunity to have it heard and have the public have a voice on whether or not it's something that they would like to see us do. Um, but I've stated before that, that I don't like the idea of moving it. Um, but I've stated before that that I don't like the idea of moving it. Um, I don't like the idea of having some districts, you know, uh, the idea that some might be weighted more than others due to turnout from off-year versus off-off-year. And I like the idea of it being, um, you know, kind of a a county-wide event when we elect these offices, um, that you can chime in on on matters that pertain. To the entire county and not not just be confined to matters that, um. You know, concern your your own district. Um. Uh, I think there's value in that. So I I'm not convinced that it's the, it's the right move or a move I'll support. But again, I'll vote in affirmative. Uh, of of this action so that it goes to public hearing and that people have a chance to speak on it.
Think we need a second. Well, I guess he did. I made the motion.
I know he was voting for it, I think, but if if it happened. I don't have another question. And Mister Havlin. I guess you see no problems with it. It's just changing the order. So you'll rewrite it, but I'll. Like with the dates, it has to take effect May nineteen, but does the Electoral Board have to vote for the draw before a certain time before that? So do we have to, how much time does it take to do the ordinance? And if we have to have thirty days, we have to have a public hearing and then wait, or as soon as it passes, the next day?
The ordinance would have to be advertised for public hearing. Then adopted by the board, the Electoral Board would need to, if option three were, um, the direction the board decided to go, would need to. Select those districts by, I believe it was May nineteen, so that.
That's what I'm saying, right? They need time.
Yeah, everything needs to be determined thirty days prior to the final day of filing.
Right, yes, that, everything would have to be done thirty days prior to.
That's what I said. This is, this is March already. If we need a month for that, do we need, how much time do we need if we decide to pass it? And if we decide to do that option, to give the Electoral Board to come up with the draw or whatever, to get back to us?
Right, the the ordinance is a standard two-week advertisement.
Okay.
Um, so that would go into your normal process.
Well, I don't normally do an anonymous section. Any further discussion? And this is, this is dealing with the third option. And still, like I said, we've got a public hearing line, so it's, no matter what we do, any further discussion.
Yes.
So this is to direct staff to go ahead with, um, drafting an ordinance based on option three.
Option.
Correct.
Yes.
Mister Morin.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Aye.
Mister Greenwood.
Aye.
Mister Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
My next official capacity, and this will be May, before May nineteenth, when the Electoral Board meets to do the drawing, if you guys move forward with this. But I will be available for questions if you have any and. With the state code that we have in front of us, but. That's about all.
And just so folks know, it it's no additional cost because you've got the election anyway.
Right, we have a November general regardless, so.
Well, just curious, could you maybe give out a blurb about that coming? Because we probably won't have another meeting, but just so that the public, since we have so many here, just a little announcement about the special.
Um, so with our special, we are a week away, almost on Tuesday, Mar- March the seventh is the election time. Um, to date. We have had two hundred and seventy-seven, um, in-person voters and a hundred and seventy-one come back by mail.
How many?
Excuse me?
How many, how many, uh? Elect. Eligible voters?
Yeah.
How many eligible voters?
Tell you what.
Oh, that are registered to vote?
Yeah, right.
Okay. I was gonna say, all of them have counted. I mean, we're in the machine. Um, there, we have just shy of fourteen thousand registered voters in King William County.
All right, good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Captain Hammond. The R S A F grant. Stakes agreement.
Uh, Mister Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Uh, we're here, uh, before you tonight to request, uh, the board's approval, uh, to apply for the spring grant cycle. Uh, for the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services. Uh, the grant sought is commonly referred to as the R S A F grant. That is the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund. Uh, if we're successful, these funds will be used, uh, to purchase software for our nine-one-one dispatchers. Uh, that will provide for emergency medical dispatching protocols to be implemented with our currently existing CAD system. That CAD is. Computer aided dispatch, not computer aided design. Uh, the program, uh, allows for on-screen answer of potentially life-saving, uh, medical questions and instructions to our nine-one-one. Excuse me, our nine-one-one dispatchers prior to the arrival of first responders. Uh, the program does so, uh, by guiding our emergency dispatchers through a series of programmed questions to gather essential information. Regardless of the experience of the dispatcher, uh, to ensure consistency and a high standard of care by ensuring that all of the proper medical protocols are followed. Um, I believe we have a, that's the high-level view of the program.
Thank you.
Working on, I believe we have a short video. I'll tell you, the video, um, is of an actual nine-one-one call. It's a screenshot of a nine-one-one dispatcher actually using the software in the program in real life. Uh, it is, uh, you you'll see how these questions are come up, uh, for our dispatchers, uh, based upon what is actually in, what's happening, what the caller is seeing. So that dispatcher can ask the appropriate questions at the appropriate time. But they're not asking more questions than they need to delay the actual dispatch of emergency services. They're getting a snapshot of just. The, uh, the important ones, pre-dispatching of emergency service. Then they'll go into post-dispatching, uh, after they've already dispatched it. I'll tell you, all of these things come together, uh, with that integration, uh, and I think you're gonna see. How it it all comes to to make the consistent, uh, questions really beneficial for the caller on the other end, this, uh, having this, uh, emergency. I will tell you. One of the things that you'll notice is, is that this is actually going to happen in real time. So it is very, uh, it's very quick. And so you'll have to look at it. You'll be looking at that screen exactly like the nine-one-one dispatcher sees it in real time. So it does happen pretty quickly. Um, so that's what we want. Uh, what we're shooting for is about ninety seconds is the industry standard for that, uh, to be. From the time of call to the time that it's dispatched. Um, there'll be a flashing light that says you've got enough information, dispatch the call, and then move on to the next section of all this. While we're waiting for that, is there any questions? I know, uh, Chief Reeves is here. We discussed the actual grant itself and matching grant. He could speak more to the actual funding, uh, of that.
And it's no general fund, right?
Sir?
No general fund.
Uh, well, so this is out of, uh. The the match would mostly be covered by the R S A F grant fundings that we have already been approved for capital.
What is most of?
Well. If the grant is awarded at eighty-twenty, the twenty percent, uh, so Alton's already there. Most, most of the twenty percent would be there. We, we don't have a.
Most of me. I was like.
Ten.
No, it it, excuse me, that it's, uh, the estimated cost of the software program is, uh, right at ninety thousand. I believe that, uh, we're sitting on already approved twenty-five thousand.
Yes.
That's already, uh, been allocated for this. So in that case, with eighty-twenty, it would be no additional.
Is it, is it also a year-over-year cost? Uh, some subscriber's fee or?
Sure, correct. The service maintenance, service maintenance fee.
You get so many years before that picks up.
Well, it's a one year, and then they've broken it out, uh, for every year. Uh, unfortunately, many of our, uh, high-technology, uh, services and our technology stuff. Does require, uh, maintenance and service agreement. If for some reason we have a glitch or problem at three o'clock in the morning, it's an immediate response. Uh, to get that system back up and running for safety.
Because after you converted this, the old system, you won't use it all, correct?
No, we, we currently don't have this system.
No, I thought you had some kind of.
We, we do. We have, we have, uh, hand, uh, done flip cards that get us close with that.
Automated.
What this does is it actually allows, uh, several different benefits to it. Uh, one is just simply the program itself. Uh, as far as that integration to our CAD. The dispatchers are seeing it on screen real time. Those, and and the questions change depending upon what the caller information, uh, is provided, where the cards do not. Uh, also, there's improved training as far as, uh, 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 more online learning for our dispatchers through a a constant cycle of training. And, uh, more, uh, one of the things I'm excited about is there's also a quality assurance program built into the software. So it allows our supervisors. To go back and listen and juggle check to make sure that all of these protocols are followed every time, all the time. Uh, so we're very excited about that. One of the other things, that, uh, quality assurance program will allow us to do is to apply for, uh, EMS, uh, dispatching accreditation. Uh, you know, we're law enforcement accredited now. We'd like to get our communication center accredited, and that is one thing, uh, that is holding us back. It's a. Robust quality assurance programs currently.
Is it gonna cause you to have to buy new servers or anything like that?
No, all of that is built into that price.
That sounds a little bad, but it's ninety thousand.
Sure, and and a large portion of that, again, is that technology, that integration into what is already existing there, that's all gonna work together. And I, so I, we don't. We have some.
Here you have your number one, but is your emergency?
I am on Alton on Rand Road, right next to the day church.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have a friend of mine who's fallen over and she's not responding to me and his eyes are open. Jim.
You're calling from six-five-one-seven-six-two-eight? Yes, tell me exactly what happened.
Jim, well, he complained of feeling, oh, he looks terrible. Send somebody now. He's purple. What do I do?
Okay, how old is he?
He's fifty-one.
Okay, is he awake?
No.
Do, is he breathing?
I don't think he is. Jim, he's not responding.
Is there a defibrillator available?
No.
Okay, sending the Alton ambulance to help you now. Okay, on the line. I'll tell you exactly what to do next. Are, are you right by him now?
I am, I am rocking him. One thing while he'll take a break.
Okay, listen carefully, okay? Lay him flat on his back on the ground and remove any pillows. Man, we're gonna give him chest compressions, okay? I'm gonna tell you how to help him. Place the heel of your hand on the breastbone in the center of his chest. Fight between the nipples, put your other hand on top of that hand. Okay, now you're gonna pump the chest hard and fast at least twice per second. Yes, okay, we're gonna do this six hundred times or till help can take over. Let the chest come all the way up between the pumps. Pound out loud so I can count with you, okay? It's gonna be one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, one, two.
And I'm pushing every time?
Yep, one, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four, one.
If someone else is there, have them pick up the phone.
One, one, one.
Go, you can go home.
No, I have radio on, if you're talking.
Hello?
I hear this is nine-one-one. The ambulance has been notified, okay? If she gets too tired, sir, are you able to take over?
I have somebody else doing it right now.
Okay, great. Make sure they're doing it, um, fast enough. One, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four. Long buddy, you can do it over here. Rescue is here right now.
Oh, they are? Make sure they don't stop until.
No, no, he, 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 keep going, keep going, keep going until they get here.
You guys are doing great. Thank you so much for helping out. Okay, is rescue taking over?
Okay, she's gonna let you go, ma'am, okay?
Okay, they're taking over. I'll let you go, sir.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
So Captain, these are dropdown menus, uh, auto-fill. How do you do that today?
Right now, what the dispatchers are having to do is, is they have their flip charts in front of them, and they're having to type manually all of these things into the comments. So. This program literally reduces some of the human error that we can put in, as well as that audit trail to make sure that they ask the right questions. Because again, there have been other cases with other jurisdictions where too many questions are asked, and it links the dispatch time. That, uh, red flashing thing that you saw where, uh, in the corner over there on the right side, that's to remind and prompt the dispatchers, you have enough information right now. Go ahead and dispatch it within that, that time frame, just be the one.
I can see an incredible, we're taking, my wife and I are taking the cert class now, and the protocols from just five, ten years ago changed so much. This would allow you to get real-time techniques, processes embedded.
Right, and that's the other, uh, yearly thing is for those updates and certain things. Um, the system is customizable for King William County. It's not a one-stop shop. Uh, there's also, uh, local protocols that we can, uh, implement in there, uh, build out the system as we like it.
We need a nod for much? But yeah.
You need a motion?
Yeah, well, we'll do it, but, uh, you know, really have any. Any resolution for it.
No, but, uh, to move forward, uh, Mister Chair, I'll, I'll make the motion that we move forward with the grant.
We'll see. And just got a question. Miss Branch.
Mister Miskowski.
Aye.
Mister Greenwood.
Aye.
Mister Garber.
Aye.
Mister Morin.
Aye.
Mister Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is our quarterly financial report, Miss Branch. Before you start, are we using Excel reports? For the Edmunds reports?
What we're doing is we're pulling, I can always attach Edmund's report. So when we run reports from Edmunds. If you notice in the quarter of the report for them for like, hmm, if we just go to revenues. What you'll see is, you'll see a, a summary of all the real estate. Well, in Edmunds, it's gonna say current real estate, prior year's real estate. So I combine that in one line. And then for just different things, just what I do is I put it, I, so you're not having to see line by line by line by line.
And my next question, have you changed any of the information on the, if there was a ledge?
Um, no, no, they have to match the report. That what I do is I make sure that I run the report in Edmunds. But like I said, sometimes a revenue report could be maybe. Pretty lengthy because of all the different lines that we have in there. So what I do is I just kind of, um. I make sure when I do this summary, it matches with that total number at that, at the end of that report. That's not a problem, though, for me to attach that report at the end of these, that you could actually see, and it'll be a really quick thing for you to look at, to just kind of go, does that total match? That total match? But you wouldn't have to, unless you had questions about something, like maybe if you were looking at something. And if you notice the little marks in there, that's because there's a comment in there. Yes, that's what it means.
Right. And you're ready?
Alrighty. So included in the agenda pack, packet this evening is an overview financial report for FY twenty-three, second quarter. Revenues and expenditures summary are included in pages one through five. Page six of the packet includes the summary of the noteworthy items. Were there any questions about any of the revenues or expenditures before I go on to just the noteworthy?
On the revenues, it seems like we are way ahead of what what was projected for food and beverage taxes. And all of that goes to the schools.
Yes, one hundred percent goes to the schools.
And y'all keep up with the real estate tax revenues, the, uh. You know, our private personal property tax, how are we on receiving those? private, personal property tax, how are we on receiving those percentage wise? Are we normal?
Yes.
Where we normally?
We are right where we need to be. We're at fifty percent for real estate. So that's, we're six months into it. This was as of December thirty-first. So yeah, we're looking fine for our revenues. We are.
Some thoughts that it might be low because people wouldn't have the money. That didn't really material.
No, no, everything looks fine.
Could you attach just send us an email of the actual report?
You want the detail of it? Oh, sure. Yeah, no big deal.
You remember back in the day when we used to sit there on Fridays?
Yeah.
Line by line, that's what. It was a point brought up tonight that Excel is a perfectly fine tool to use for analysis. And my goodness, I have a hard time thinking of what we are doing right now other than analyzing. I, I don't see any particular value in, in boring through, you know, thirty pages of, of, you know, line by line on revenue. You know, unless we have reason to mistrust the numbers that were given, and I have none.
I do have one question. It seems like vehicle tax, I assume that that is low because personal property taxes weren't due until, what, January? Did you notice that?
Uh, that is something, that's that thirty dollar fee that we charge.
No, no, we, we, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's what it is.
I was thinking, you, you, that's still not due until January the fifteenth, so that's probably why.
And this report was written on twelve.
The twenty, yeah. All right.
The, the noteworthy items, um, overall, the actual expenditures are consistent with budget estimates and similar in comparison to prior years. The real estate revenues, first half of fiscal year FY twenty-three, which is second half of calendar year twenty-twenty-two, was due December fifth, and real estate collections as of December thirty-first were fifty point two one percent for the fiscal year. So then our page seven is our capital projects summary. For the first quarter, we completed cybersecurity initiatives, emergency backup batteries at courthouse, and vehicles for you, a vehicle for the utilities department. Second quarter, what we have finished is funding to the West Point volunteer fire and rescue and the SCBA for fire and rescue. We have received the reimbursement from AFG grant too. We received that in January though, so you won't see that reflected in here yet. That's why there's a negative under the SCBA, because they're going to reimburse us for what we've already spent. Unfortunately, that's how much of the grants work. We gotta spend it first. And then page eight is our proffers. The proffers fund has a balance of seven hundred thirty-three sixty as of December thirty-first. And FY twenty-three, two hundred forty-nine, one sixty-four was committed from proffers to support the capital projects for two hundred thousand and forty-nine, one sixty-four to support debt service lease payment on FY twenty-two purchase of sheriff's office vehicles. Proffers cash is collected from developers to go towards public facilities and infrastructure needs to serve the new development. The next slide is our utilities department. The water and sewer fund makes up the utilities one. There has been a growth in both funds for this fiscal year. Water fund has increased twenty-five, nine, six, zero for second quarter. Water revenues consist of water usage, water connections, and meter sales. The sewer fund has increased a hundred and twenty thousand as of second quarter. Sewer revenues consist of sewer connection charges. Any questions on that? We fund the, the salaries and all the, the professional needs and all that from the water fund. It does not come from the general fund. So anyone that is working in the utilities department, all expenses related to that fuel, all of that is actually within the water fund. And we anticipate using those two funds to offset the debt service potentially in the next fiscal year. Yeah. So the next slide is our ARBA. I think, did we, did I slide ahead to? No, I'm good. Arbor funds have been appropriated for three million, three hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight. As of the thirty-first of December, we have expended six, eight, six thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine, sixty-two. And that is covering from the period that we are allowed to use Arbor funds, and that is March third, twenty-twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Any questions on that? Social services is our next summary. The social service fund has expended thirty-six percent of the overall FY twenty-three budget through second quarter, which is consistent in comparison to prior years. Last year, they were at forty percent. And I made a little note too, because we're always gonna fall behind one month. We can't send anything to the state for reimbursement again until we spend it. So the FS sends a laser report to the state. We, we thought we would receive that money for, say, this February. We would not receive the money for reimbursement until the end of March. And the next slide is our animal shelter. That is actually a picture of the animal shelters kitty cat that is actually paid with food, not dollars, okay? So the regional animal shelter fund revenues and expenses also are consistent in comparison to prior years for second quarter. Expenses are at fifty-four overall through second quarter. King William County front loads the general fund transfer in July each year. And then each month, what I do is I run a report for all the operating expenses and only operating expenses. salaries, professional services, things like that. That, and then I, I end up billing King and Queen for their portion, plus the three percent admin fee. Um, we've been working hand in hand with the county administrator to making sure that we give them that she has actually even received this quarterly report. And we try to stay ahead of just keeping them informed on what's going on at the animal shelter too. And then the last one, the last summary is Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec Programs Fund is on target with anticipated program revenues and expenditures. Parks and Rec Program revenues and expenditures are separate from the general fund. General administrative costs for the Parks and Rec Department are covered by the general fund. So any of her, her full-time staff are actually covered by general fund. But any staff that she uses for part-time to actually participate in the programs and help out with those, that is actually paid from that program's revenues. And then looking ahead, FY twenty-three budget to actual monitoring will continue. FY twenty-two bank reconciliations, which is July twenty-twenty-one through June twenty-twenty-two, have been completed. Bank reconciliations are by definition a summary of the banking and business activities that reconciles an entity's bank account with its financial records. It outlines the deposits, withdrawals, and other activities affecting a bank account for a specific period. The bank account, the bank reconciliation task was moved from the treasurer's office to county finance July one, twenty-twenty-two. FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two audits were delayed until bank reconciliations had been completed. FY twenty-two audit field work was completed in January, and a draft of the audit for twenty-two is expected this week. We hope to actually have Erin from the auditing firm present a draft at the work session in March. At this time, county finance is now working on FY twenty-three bank reconciliations and anticipate completion to be on target for the FY twenty-three audit completion. Now that prior year's reconciliations have been completed, we will begin to work with Edmunds on implementation of the bank reconciliation module. It is our goal to complete this fiscal year within Edmunds. Unfortunately, the Edmunds software was not an option until all bank accounts versus general ledger reconciling items were identified for both FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. Now with those items, we can move forward including that information and use Edmunds to reconcile bank accounts versus what is posted in the financial system. FY twenty-four budget development is in progress. All I have. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I may, so we're looking at the annual report.
For twenty-two?
Yes.
Yes.
We're looking at that maybe in March?
Yeah, we hope to.
All right.
So what'll happen is he's gonna try to present that draft to us this week. And as I have that, then it can go on the work session. It, it, that's fine. But what's gonna take the longest time is actually then taking that information, we need to review it. Stacy Longus and I have to review it first. Then we have to actually come together and make a, put together the management letter that is actually part of that annual report. And then once we send that off to them with all of our graphs, tables, other little information that we collect from different departments for our operating things, then they put it all together for us and put it in the, to the CAFR for us. So hopefully by the end of March, we should have a CAFR, like bound final done.
And going forward, you have, this, this process will be more streamlined, more precise, et cetera?
Yes, yeah, we've actually even, we've kind of tinkered in Edmunds. We actually have a phone call this week with them. What they were telling us is they're needing somewhere along the line, someone has tried to use it, and it has to be cleaned up. Um, because there's a lot, they were looking at it behind the scenes Friday, and they need to spend a whole day with Gina Wilson, who takes care of the bank reconciliations, and Julie Mills, because she knows both sides of how the, everything's flowing into that bank reconciliation. They're gonna spend the whole day with them, make sure we have all of our different funds. We have probably, hmm, gosh, probably about fifty different funds that funnel into one bank account. So we have to make sure when we're looking at a bank statement that we're including all those different funds. Every transaction that has hit those funds, it's being pulled into Edmunds. And they were saying that there is possibly something that isn't linking in there, and they're gonna work with us. And at that point, it's pretty much looking at deposits, verifying them that they're in the system, looking for checks that are outstanding. And it should be fairly easy, a lot less complicated than what it is for us right now.
The burning question is why were you able to complete a successful audit, whereas it hadn't gotten done before?
For FY twenty, uh, which year?
The twenty-one that was.
Twenty-one? Um, the, the only thing that was holding us back for the twenty-one was the bank reconciliation. So an auditor, he actually even refused to come down at, at any further because he said that is the key to everything. It, cash is the one thing that's gonna say, are the revenues posted right? Are the expenses posted right? Because basically, if there's an item in there that it, it, it's sitting at the bank that didn't hit our system right there, and then you're saying a revenue didn't post right. So it ties everything. A check that's outstanding, an expense maybe didn't post right. But that's, that, that's what holds us all together and actually is what drives the financial statement. And our, our, our funds are all pooled. So most counties don't even have separate bank accounts for the schools. We have, we do. That was set up years ago. But that has been something we've been talking about for, gosh, I guess, even in the last audit, I think we had talked about it. Mr. Montoro has advised that we just put it all in one bank account and stop trying to separate school funds in this bank account. But that's not something we're just ready to just pull the plug on until we have a full understanding. How is that gonna affect everything else? So.
Wouldn't we get better rates by doing that more than once?
Um, right now, Ms. Carlton has actually got us four and a half percent on just about every bank account we have. So it doesn't really matter where you put it.
So it wouldn't affect it that much?
No, no, because as, as far as I understand, the schools have that, and we also have that in our operating accounts. And she actually, she uses our operating account to pay the bills, but then she uses it in investment and a money market to then funnel that money to get that higher interest rate. So she uses two other accounts within our operating account to keep that interest, that money flowing.
And having multiple accounts, is that causing more problems with reconciling?
That is something that we would, would want to sit down and kind of, that's part of the equation, you know, the factors of that we all need to sit down and how will it affect everyone, not just finance. It, 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 because there's a lot of people that touch that.
No, not at the moment, sir.
You're welcome.
Twenty twenty-two administration annual reports. Is this on the web? Yeah. We'll be tomorrow. Didn't hear that, this report will be on the web tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Miskowski, I apologize. I did not have a copy of this for you in your presence tonight. You have one tomorrow or have access to it, to the web. This is a summary of the department activity for calendar year twenty-twenty-two. Uh, it is a summary of all the departments and/or agencies that report directly to the county administrator. Uh, the constitutional officers are not included in this document. They would do an independent annual report should, should they choose to do so. I'm not going to cover the report in late tonight, Mr. Chairman, but at your leisure. And then obviously, the public will have access to it, hopefully as early as tomorrow. And then if they need hard copies, they can request that through my office. But we feel like it's very important that there be a record, a log that is kept of the activity that goes on throughout the, the twelve-month period. And then probably what brings more value to this document is a year, two, or three down the road, you look back and see where you started and then where you end up and the progress that we look to make uh, through all the planning that we have undertaken. And as you know, we have a comprehensive plan that is, that is being worked. We have a utility plan. Uh, we just finished creating a recreation plan. Uh, we have our six-month planning process that's working effectively with staff. And it's real easy for the public to, to measure how we're doing. And certainly welcome to talk to anybody about that. But at the end of a year, of a calendar year, and you can hold up something that says, hey, this is what we did, then at least it's, it's our, it can be argued how much we did, but it can't be argued that things were done. And that's what, that's what we're trying to accomplish through your leadership. So that's that tonight unless anybody has any questions specifically right now. We could, we could always bring this back to a future meeting if you want to discuss it later on.
You look like you got something.
That's what I commented, this, this provides more transparency than we've ever had.
Thank you.
Of the criticism of some tonight.
Okay. Mr. Chair, moving to the county administrator's report this evening, this is also in your packet. You, you get it a week in advance of the meeting, and then I have an update on the, the night of the meeting. And you can see in your report, anything that's in yellow was added in the next day or two. Just to go over real quick a few dates, and first let me talk about the Board of Equalization. They have their organizational meeting tomorrow here in the boardroom at four o'clock. And as you know, they, they have a major task ahead of them as they will be entertaining appeals from our residents relative to their real estate properties beginning on March the twentieth. Uh, March the third, which is probably, that is the last day for people to submit applications or hearings to be scheduled. Now, I'm sure they'll be liberal about that. If somebody calls us the following week and says, hey, you know, we, we missed something, can't we get it in? I'm sure that will happen. But you have to set a deadline somewhere, and that is March the third. So we encourage our residents, if you haven't submitted an appeal, they need to fill out an application. And then through administration. uh, through administration, along with the Board of Equalization, we will uh, set a a hearing schedule that will begin on March the twentieth. And right now we have approximately twenty, twenty to twenty five appeal. Um, which is not bad, uh, considering the uh, um, just the length and the volume of work that was done by the Pearson, uh, Fred Pearson and his group. And then the number of questions that were answered uh, in between the time uh, to maybe uh, did rise to an appeal uh, answer, but at least they were, it was still an answer that satisfied many people who called in. So that process certainly worked and it's going to continue to work. So again, your key date is Friday, March third to get your appeal in and then March the twentieth is when the uh, uh, the hearings begin and they'll be held here, is that right? They'll be held here in the boardroom. Uh, and then you can see the dates of some of the upcoming meetings that are uh, taking place also tomorrow night, the Board of Zoning Appeals uh, has a has a meeting. Uh, Thursday night, uh, the Recreation Commission meets. Uh, I want to remind the public that the Board of Supervisors has another budget work session. That'll be a week from tonight. That's on March the sixth, begin at seven o'clock, as all meetings do.
And and so.
That that's right, that we get to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then the very next night, the Board of Supervisors will be meeting with the members of the of the King William School Division, the school board uh, to go over their budget and receive their budget presentation. And then it's been said, uh, the next work session after that is March thirteenth. And that is the night uh, that the uh, administration will present to you the FY twenty four budget recommendations. We also have an Economic Development Authority meeting coming up on March the eighth. And then the Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Board meets on March the ninth. Those are a few of the meetings in the in the next few days and then you can see later on in the month, we have some other things that will be taking place. Mr. Chairman, if I could give you a couple of updates on some things, uh, first of all, we want to remind people that there is a burn law in place, uh, the burn ordinance. Um, it's administered by the Department of Forestry. Nobody can burn before four o'clock and uh, there's been some that have tried and they're gonna, they're they're gonna come out and look at you when that happens and it could, depending on the severity of the fire, it could result in fire. Um, so we would encourage people to follow through until April the twenty eighth. And then obviously, uh, they would be able to burn uh, at their uh, eight, is it thirty?
That's what I.
Might be. Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. It says in there. I'm sorry, April thirty. That's right. Um, we're always asking and looking for members of the public to serve on our uh, uh, boards and commissions. And they can do that by registering online and those applications are uh, are submitted and obviously given to you for your consideration when appointments come up. We have two appointments that are really pressing, one for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the other one is for the uh, Social Services Advisory Board. If anybody would like to serve on uh, in either one of them capacities, um, we would appreciate an application so that the board could be making a decision on that uh, very soon.
Just ask, do we, do we have any applications?
Not at the present time. For either, for either one. I think everyone knows the uh, the input and the debt of service that in gratitude that we owe the King William uh, Worthing Club for the work that they have done for many, many years. It's really exciting to see one of its members elevate to a national status and that's what's happened. Um, member Mike Morrison uh, is now the president of the National Worthing Club and that is, that is a huge uh, uh, feather in the cap of not just Mike, but uh, for the club itself. So we congratulate him on behalf of all of the King William County Government. And I want to remind the uh, the Worthing Club, this ride is always a very successful event. And that is set for Tuesday, April the eleventh, and that'll be up at the Worthing Building, which everyone knows is off of Route thirty. A big project that we've talked about and it's always good to get something started and I think it's going uh, smooth here in the first uh, week or so of the renovations that are taking place to the convenience site down near King William High School. Um, at the conclusion of that, uh, it should be, uh, a couple of things should be happening. It should be easier for people to navigate around uh, where they will actually dispose of their of their trash. But probably more importantly is the lack of stacking of the cars that will take, that is taking place now on Route thirty. We hope that that will be uh, that will be a thing of the past. Uh, it's a, it's a great investment that the Board of Supervisors has made and we have a good partner in VIPS that is uh, is making all that happen. So if anybody has any questions, please let us know, but uh, what is the timeframe to be a couple of months?
Um, yes, they're hoping to be, if weather conditions, it would be um, mid-April.
Okay.
Well, good. How much is that affecting the sudden change?
They've told us very little. I mean, if there are some delays, uh, we we're trying to get the advertising.
No, but but I was just there Sunday. It wasn't, you know, they weren't working, of course, but it wasn't any delay at all. But I assume during the middle of the week is probably times that that it may be as they get further into the the project, but they're they're kind of working over to the right of the area right now to be better than what it was.
But they'll, they'll try to hit Tuesdays hard.
Right. The majority of the work is going to be adjacent to the existing site. Of course, there will be days that they'll be having to take up what is in use right now. They're going to try and hit Tuesdays the most because that's the day that it's already closed, but there will probably be some days. Um, but so far they have not alerted us to any yet because they're able to work on the other times in the other space.
And I didn't bring with me, but they do have a full brochure now of when you can drop off ink computers and one of my things is that King William in April.
Yeah, that's for their community day activities.
They are, they're working with the school to use, I think they're.
That's what I thought it was, but I didn't want to put that out, but there is, it's probably on their web.
Yeah, we need to start promoting that in our history, so. Is it already on the website? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you know how proud we are uh, to be a farm community. King William's Heritage was built on farming and it, we have an opportunity now, if if we can step up, we have a very short deadline on this for folks to nominate uh, someone in the farm community in which the state fair would recognize.
I think I did.
And I hope so. Um, and they're doing it in a creative and kind of a clever way. It's going to be with trading cards. They're going to have a picture on one side, just like a baseball card and on the back they would talk about the person and what they do and the contributions that they've made to farming. And they'll be honored at the state fair uh, this summer. So we have to have those in by March the third, according to uh, uh, the site. So if anybody knows, I know you know somebody, it's just a matter of doing the due diligence to get people nominated.
You get my, I replied to you. Was that what I was supposed to do? I did reply.
I don't. Oh, I saw the name. I thought that was relative to the Board of something that appeals. I apologize. Okay. Uh, I I think there's an application that has some these, but we can look at that tomorrow and see if we can help fill that out for you. Okay. Yeah, you did send me a name then. Anyway, it's State Fair Virginia, statefairva.org is the address. If you just Google State Fair of Virginia, you get the uh, the address and it'd be nice to have at least uh, one of, one of the twelve that's going to be recognized come from King William. It'd be, it would really be nice if that could happen.
So so we can say we as a board come up with four? Uh, what 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 kind of number?
I think you want to do it individually.
Individually.
I don't think you want to do it as a board. You're not going to meet in time to do that. I think you as individuals.
Just recommend.
And if you happen to have a duplicate nomination, I don't think that hurts necessarily. A couple more notes here, Mr. Chairman, uh, longtime state senator Tommy Norman announced his retirement from uh, from the General Assembly this past weekend.
I believe.
It is. Uh, so uh, at some point, uh, we may want to bring him here to congratulate him on his years of service uh, to our community. Uh, the Rappahannock Community College is creating a citizens advisory committee that would promote careers in welding. We all know how the trades are just, they'll continue to be vitally important to the success of any community. And they are putting together a committee that will, that will help to uh, uh, to guide this new program. Uh, King William County has been asked to participate in that and we will. Um, so that you'll be hearing more about that. And finally, as you know, you approved uh, at your last meeting, the establishment of a position for Director of Economic Development. Um, we are now advertising for that position. We have received applications already. Uh, we will be scheduling some meetings, uh, or some interviews probably in the next two to three weeks. Uh, we would like to have a member of the Board of Supervisors to serve on that interview team. Uh, so if you could look at each other this evening and uh, possibly decide who might uh, who might want to do that. The meetings are probably going to be in the daytime.
That's what I think.
Uh, that's when I think they would at least try. But there could be some evening time, depending on how far the uh, the applicant had to travel.
As you know, that'd be a complex information.
Sure, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go on, Jerry.
And you're appointed.
Do you need, do you need just one?
I think so. Uh, we have a planning commission that'll be represented and of course the EDA will be represented. Um, matter of fact, Mr. Campbell is serving on that as one of the EDA members, so I think that would be appropriate. And Mr. Greenwood, we're going to ask the same for the planning commission. So if you want to, you may be on that side if you want to, if you want to jump on and uh, and uh, show your interest. So that's my report for the evening. Mr. Chairman, any questions?
Don't think so. It looks like it, Travis. Any questions?
No, none for the administrator, sir.
Thank you very much. Don't forget, you have your two items at the end of the agenda.
I got them right here looking at them. All right, we're going back up to nine B ordinance zero one dash twenty three McCully Park. Have we completed it?
A different glance of those sessions tonight, but we do have a copy um, for Mr. Waters to find and first the bomber to uh, notify.
Okay, so it's done, it's my fault.
Okay, so we got that out of the way.
Yeah.
It's notarized and and that is, um, we have the rezoning case and then we have a conditional use permit after that if the rezoning case is approved.
The twenty three dash eighteen. And we did public hearings along with, we go back any of that.
Nope, just your action.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve ordinance one dash twenty three. Second.
New discussion.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi. Now that we have resolution twenty three dash eighteen. Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we approve twenty three eighteen.
Second.
Discussion. It's branch.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Friedmuth?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi. All right, and I think it brings us to Board of Supervisors comments. And Mr. Moran, I'm starting then, everyone.
Well, I want to encourage everybody to to, everybody that hasn't voted yet to get out and vote March seventh. Great turnout tonight. I think we got bruised a little bit. Uh, I'm not going to make any comments about that. I'd like to congratulate Mike Morrison on on his appointment. And everybody have a good night and hopefully we can continue to have good turnouts.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming. Like I said, it was a huge crowd, uh. I said, I hope we get maybe uh, the other company, Breeze Line to come and maybe talk to us in the future about maybe their updates for the other sections of the county. And I am going to mention something about that other comment because we can't usually talk, but some of this stuff needs to be stated out in public. A lot of that stuff, some people, those people were saying it is false. Um, it is majority of the board that rules, but it is not everyone that votes on those things, so they cannot say that each one of us are responsible for certain things. And like I said, some of it was outright lies. And if some of those people had come to some of the meetings, they would have seen some of the stuff that they were complaining about. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much. Mr. Muskowski.
Mr. Chair, I I do have a comment about what took place earlier in this evening because quite frankly, it it was a display in why uh, government writ large is struggling to function right now. Uh, it's because you get disgusting displays like that of cherry picked quotes, twisted information. Um, unsubstantiated uh, accusations uh, that they never do circle back around to give any evidence as to why they make that accusation. A man questioning my standing with God. Are you kidding me? This type of, the these people denied that you saw tonight are nothing but conspirists, they're fabricators, or they're power hungry themselves. What you saw tonight was a well-funded attempt to besmirch this government in an attempt to gain power for those that have money to pay for it. So you want to know who's really deceiving people or pulling the wool over people's eyes? Follow the money to what you saw tonight because that was ridiculous. Nobody in that room that is trying to do the good work for the people deserve to have to sit through that, deserve to have to suffer that indignity. It's ridiculous and I'm not going to stand for it. Because what are we doing? We're so power hungry that we're trying to consolidate the ability to what? Balance the checkbook? Because no one else will do it? That's what we're talking about here, people. It's, it's asinine is really what it was. Everything that you heard tonight was either a lie, a half truth, or a twisted comment. Even the part about changing the form of government. Yeah, there are people on this board who would like to change the form of government so that we had more control over constitutional officers. They didn't once mention that in order to make that change, it has to go to a ballot that the public has to approve. They didn't want you to hear that part. They wanted you to hear some story about how somehow a five-member democratically elected body is is somehow behaving dictatorially. It makes no sense. And I hope anybody with good sense that saw that display tonight can see through that and understand that that was a blatant attempt at misinformation, division, sowing chaos. And I'm not going to stand for it. I've worked too hard in my career on this board to have somebody stand up there at that podium and lie about it. So bring it on. If you've got all this information, bring it on. Because I know what this board has done. I know the legacy of my own career on this board. And I'm not going to bow down to some loons. That's all.
Oh, my top edge, Travis. Beautiful West Point. Beautiful West Point, beautiful King William right there, but uh, I wasn't going to say anything, but just brought one fact in there, dealing with the Treasures Office. Two of them retired. They're trying to make it look like we ran them all up. One quit after nineteen months, it promised forty eight months. You know? Uh, and my support was there, but it ain't there, but anyway, yeah, it's disturbing that that goes on and and I don't know. Ditto Mr. Muskowski. And if you don't like how we doing it in the first district, get a, get a petition. Hundred and twenty five names, signatures and go run for it. I think we try to do the best we can, but tonight, right now, it's disheartening. And and I'm like Travis, I'm only to the point of sending the heck with it, but uh, I don't, I don't quit. In that. You got more?
I said, I'm not quitting either. I'm just retiring. I said, I'm not quitting either. I'm just retiring.
I retire. I'm not quitting either.
And with. Quitting is, as you pointed out, resigning eighteen months into a forty-eight month commitment.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Miss Branch.
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi. I'm being adjourned. Thank you folks for coming out.